I will bring the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee to the whole meeting to order for Wednesday, February 26th. Can we please have a roll call?
We have nine present, one presiding and two absent.
Okay, please let the record reflect. Commissioner Mankins and O'Neil are excused for tonight. Commissioner McDonough, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, like upon us and guide us this night, as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Amen.
Much obliged to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
First item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Dr. Bandarob, 2601 Grand Avenue. Section 2 Communications, number 5 Communication 19582, Ed Bandarob and the Greeley Bunch requesting Council of Commissioners invite a Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazards and risk to human health of heavy metal contaminants present in the Butte Silver Bow community. I do not know how, unless you are all board-certified heavy metals toxicologists and believe that all the citizens of Butte are the same, you can expect the people of Butte Silver Bow to understand the ramifications of the consent decree. And furthermore, how can you make a rational decision on the consent decree without some sort of understanding of heavy metals toxicology? The state toxicologist has resigned and will not be available to give a presentation to this council and the public of Butte, but he was in Butte for the consent decree informational gatherings. I question why he could not have been scheduled to give a public toxicology presentation at that time. Regardless of what has been, the State Department of Public Health and Human Services toxicologist has provided me with contact information which has been forwarded to your chair of this council for other toxicologists, one of which is, lives here in Butte, that he feels would be qualified to do the kind of fundamental presentation on heavy metals toxicology needed to provide this council and the public with a better understanding of what we are actually dealing with. I do hope you will proceed to schedule this presentation, even if it may be after the fact relative to the decision on the CD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandarob. Is there any other public comment on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, report of the chair, nothing new to report, other than, as everybody knows, the consent decree meetings are, have been published and have been going on all over the place. If you guys haven't had an opportunity to attend one, there is one tomorrow evening, I believe, and there's, Chief Executive's Office does have a schedule of when those meetings are, and so if you have any questions with any staff members, please contact them and they will help you out. Moving on to Section 1, bid openings, public hearings and/or presentations, public hearing, Communication 2020-57, Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners schedule a public hearing for February 26, 2020 to take public comment on amending the fiscal year 2020 general fund courthouse improvement budget. County Attorney Joyce is our proof of publication.
Mr. Chairman, there is proof of publication. It does appear to be in order.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gleason.
Yes, Chairman Morgan, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this public hearing tonight. As mentioned, it is a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 20 budget in the courthouse improvement funds to renovate a section of the fourth floor to accommodate a new courtroom and jury room. The courtroom will work as for the city court as well as for a veterans court, and then the jury room section is for Judge Wayland's jury room. I believe both Judge Kumer and Judge McCarthy are both here tonight, if you have any questions for them on this project, as well as Pat Holland, who is managing the project. We're asking for an additional $100,000. The reason for asking for these funds now and not going through the normal budget process for fiscal year 21 is that we really need to get these renovations done and a courtroom in place to accommodate the workload that's, and the caseload that they're seeing, as well as you know that they become a quarter record, and so we're requiring to try to complete these projects, hopefully sometime late this spring, rather than waiting to even begin the project till next August. We do plan on looking at replacing these reserve funds in the 21 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Do, does any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Gleason? All right. Do the, any, either of the judges want to say anything or we're good to go? Okay. This time I'll open the public hearing for Communication 2020-57 for proponents. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak as a proponent, now would be your opportunity. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, I'll ask for opponents. If there's anybody that would like to speak as an opponent for this, now would be your opportunity. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. At this time, I'll close the public hearing for Communication 2020-57. Moving on to presentations, Communication 20-60, Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners time on the February 26, 2020 Council of Commissioners agenda for a presentation to allow time for Pat Burt, Partner Newland and Company PC and the Finance and Budget Department to present the fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Report, or Financial Report, the CAFER, and the federal schedule of awards. The presentation will include the audit findings and management responses for fiscal year ending in June 30, 2019. Ms. Gleason.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioners, again, thank you for time on the agenda. I'm Danette Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director for Butte Silver Bow. Here with me tonight is Karen Hassler, the Assistant Finance and Budget Director, and Lucy Hansen, the Accounting Manager. They're all, a whole department is instrumental in making sure that our financials are timely and presented properly and according with our government accounting standards, so their work is, definitely can't go unnoticed. Tonight, I'm just going to touch base really quickly. I handed out to you earlier just a few pages of our CAFER for you to look at. What I've given you are the main components. I've given you the management discussion analysis and the basic financial statements. The rest of our financial report, Comprehensive Financial Report, has been posted on our website since December 30th, or 31st, actually. The audit comments will be, will be posted after we meet tonight. Just want to point out a few highlights of the financial before I turn the mic over to Pat Burt, our auditors, to discuss the audit comments. If you look on the first pages there, the MDNA is probably the most easiest part for you to take a look at how our financial position is and how we did actually in the fiscal year and how we've done compared to other fiscal years. It kind of gives you an analysis. It's a requirement that we prepare this. The auditors look at these numbers. It's not a fully audited section, but they look to make sure that the numbers that I've presented are fairly inaccurate. On page 23, that's the first part of the MDNA that I've given you, is the government-wide net position, and you'll see that our net position is over $252 million, approximately $252 million, which is about 2.75% increase over fiscal year 2018. Of this amount, eight, around 8 million is unrestricted, so it's funds that haven't been restricted, more so than what we consider our reserve funds and funds that allow for flexibility spending. The net position adjusted, so we do, and every year we discuss this with you, we have to do some pension reporting. It's not pension reporting that we, we're obligated to show a liability on our financial statements, but we don't fund this liability. Had we removed that liability, we would have another $34.2 million. So, moving on, I'm going to move you quickly kind of through this document tonight, but if you go over to page 27 of the document, you'll see a summary of our capital assets there. You'll see that of the government-wide capital assets and our net position is represented by 71% of assets, which is a strong component. We're up slightly total by net position and also within our capital assets as a government-wide. Let's see here. On page 28 is another graph and chart that I think is important for you, to point out to you tonight. That shows the different components of our net position. It's so, it shows the net investments, it shows the restricted, and then also the unrestricted portion of our net position. Another really important chart is the one right below it. It shows our trend in net position. So what I look for to show financial stability is to make sure that we're not dipping low, that we're continually to stay flat or we're growing. So, if you look at that graph there, to me, on our net position, we're doing very, very well. Then I'm going to move you all the way over to page 36. So like I said, we'll kind of do this quickly tonight. On page 36 is another really important key graph that shows the government activities by program revenues. This shows our general government expenditures, or so governmental, public safety, public works, public health, all the different components of our governmental activities, and within that chart, it shows the expenses as well as the program revenues. So you see that difference. So if you look at general government, for example, and you see that our expenditures are a little over 20 million, but the program revenues are only about 15 million, that difference is the tax revenue needed to support those activities. So, public safety, for example, they don't have a lot of different program revenues, so we have a large expenditure of over 18 million with program revenues around four, so that big gap is what we, is where our tax dollars go. So I think this is a key graph to always be showing everyone and that you kind of follow where our, our numbers are going and where our funds are being spent and allocated every fiscal year. This is not any different than in past years. This looks very similar to what has happened in the past. Moving to page 38, actually, if you look at page 37, too, that graph is more or less summarized on 37 with the net cost of services, and again, you'll see where public safety rises to the highest number of 48.44% of the net cost of expenditures. On 38, page 38 is the primary government business types. So these are the water utility division, the metro sewer, solid waste, those different departments that are business type entities, you'll see the success that they've had. I can tell you, big thing that stood out in all my analytics in my review this past fiscal year was the work that the Public Works Department under Director Mark Neary and then the work of Chief Executive Palmer. I know the time and effort that they put into controlling overtime, and this is very significant. It had a huge impact on the water division, the metro department, and a slight or more impact on the landfill, but if you look at the analysis and you read the whole management discussion analysis throughout the document, you're going to see that come to light. It was just, it was very encouraging to see that, the efforts that were made by all the departments. Let's see. I'm going to go over to page 40. That's the historical trend of fund balance. You'll see that our fund balance is remaining healthy, which is a good indication of our financial stability here as a local government, and the different efforts that everybody's making to be good stewards of public dollars, as well as, this is one of the main components when we go out for bonding, for especially any type of general obligation bonding, they look for this help in, in this type of a trend in, in the general fund. And right below that is just the components. It shows the non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned portion of the general fund fund balance. Move on to page 52. This is the capital section. Lucy Hansen has done tremendous amount of work in this area for us, assuring that we're capitalizing all projects appropriately, as well as, we did a lot of cleanup over the last couple of years on assets that were on the books that were definitely not functioning any longer and should have been disposed of many, many years ago. There was a lot of time and effort put in by her part, as well as some of the departments having to go through lists and try to find assets, identify assets, and where they were not being used, and then also, again, working with Public Works, and some of the departments have also, outside of our department, worked with Public Works to do with the auction, the online auction, to get rid of some of these assets that are no longer needed by the local government. You'll see that we have 47% of our assets depreciated for our government. That is pretty standard. We have total, total capital net assets of a little over $114 million. Then, just moving into page 60 of the MDNA, for those that are kind of newer to this process, this is really my high-level view, along with using some experts that I rely on and industry factors to kind of analyze the economics of our local government, and then it also gives some of the budget highlights and what we see, we see going forward in the future. And some of the MDNA, which I haven't discussed about tonight, as well as the first part of the financial statements, when you pick it up, is the transmittal letter, and that talks a lot about our strategic plan and how we move forward into the next year and next five years. And then, really, in page 64, just wanted to point out how strong our building and construction has been happening and what's been going on in our community. That was another huge factor in 18 and kind of rolled over into 19. These numbers here are on a calendar year versus a fiscal year, so it's pretty amazing to see a lot of the construction that's taken place in, in our local government. So, in a nutshell, I guess, I would say, without jumping right into the financials, I don't think we have all night to sit there and go through budget actuals for every single fund of the local government. I can just say that I feel very comfortable that we're very stable position in our governmental and our business-type funds. There's, like I said, there's been a lot of work done in Public Works, as well as a lot of other departments, working on controlling costs and still trying to provide the best possible service that we can here at Butte Silver Bow. So, maybe we can move on to Pat Burt's presentation, and then we'll follow up at the very end with any total discussion or any questions that anybody might have. It's the ghosts. So, I'll introduce you, Pat Burt from Newland and Company. He is the partner from Newland and Company. He's the lead auditor on our financials.
Danette, before Pat starts talking, I just want to thank you for putting this packet of information together. The 10, 15 minutes that we just went through, it doesn't give it justice. There's a lot of information in here, and I appreciate getting these every, every year, Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. This has become an annual event. I've done this now for several years, made, made presentations of the audit comments to the commissioners and then opened that up to questions, so we've changed it up a little bit from the past is, is, I've also, in past presentations, I've, I've discussed the financial impact, and, and so rather than do that twice, we, we determined that Danette would be best to explain, and I will deal just with our opinions on the financial statements and then our audit findings. So, in the packet that you have in front of you, in the Newland and Company, the very first report is our independent auditor's report. It's headed page 18, 19, and 20. What that report is, is our opinion on the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2019. The report discusses management's responsibility and auditor responsibility, and as is very well-known, or should be well-known, is Butte Silver Bow prepares its own financial statements, which are a complete set of financial statements that include all footnotes, all required forms, all, all the subject matter necessary for presentation of a government financial statement. Our responsibility is to audit those financial statements and make an opinion concerning those audited financial statements. Again, our responsibility includes tests, tests of controls, also tests of transactions. On page 19 is our opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented for the governmental activities, business-type activities, discreetly presented component unit, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information as of June 30, 2019. And also, our opinion covers the budgetary activities of what are considered called major funds. What we call this is an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. There are no adjustments that would have been necessary or no errors that we discovered on the financial statements. We're also required to report on required supplementary information, and that consists mainly of pension liabilities, scheduled contributions, and scheduled contractual required contributions related to your pension disclosures. This report also includes information on your federal awards. There is a schedule of federal awards that unfortunately, I don't believe is in your packet, but a schedule of federal awards that we also audit as a separate portion of our audit and provide this, an opinion on those schedules as required by government auditing standards. We also, as part of our audit, audit the combining individual and non-major funds, which are all your minor funds. We also, our audit procedures also include that information. And then finally, our report also includes a report on compliance with government auditing standards. Per our state contract, we actually audit based upon a compliance supplement to ensure that the local government is complying with the state laws that are, are necessary and in place. So that, that covers through, through page 21. The next opinion is a separate opinion that we, we go over in accordance with government auditing standards. This, this opinion concentrates specifically on internal controls and compliance related to those internal controls. As part of our auditing, we do, also perform tests of internal controls and tests of transactions to determine the government's compliance with those matters. There's, there are several levels of deficiencies. A material weakness is a very significant deficiency that says that errors may occur and not be detected. We did not find any material weaknesses in your internal controls. However, as in past years, we did note some items which we consider to be significant deficiencies, and those significant deficiencies, if, if you flip the page, are shown as findings number 2019-001, 2019-002, and 2019-003, and, and I will cover those later on in the presentation. We're also required to audit for compliance and significant non-compliance, and our report covers that compliance, and the results of this test disclosed no instances of non-compliance that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Butte Silver Bow is also required to respond to our findings in what's called a correction action plan. That is also part, part of this packet. Part of the process is, the findings are delivered to Danette Gleason's office, who then distributes those findings and, and allows the management of the individual departments to respond to those findings. And included in this packet is, is my findings, but also the government's response to the findings. The final report is a report specific to federal audit programs. The federal government issues a compliance supplement that we're required to follow. We're required to audit what's considered a major federal program, and, and in those terms, those are programs with expenditures in excess of $750,000. During this year, we had one program that had expenditures of $750,000 that was considered a major program. This opinion relates to just major programs. Again, in our opinion, the, the Butte Silver Bow complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major programs for the year ended June 30, 2019. If, on internal control, we're also required to provide a report on internal control specific to the major federal programs, and the compliance requirements are very similar, but they are specific to major federal programs. So of the findings that I referenced earlier, 2019-001 and So, of the findings that I referenced earlier, 2019-001 and 2019-002 could potentially impact federal programs. So, those are also a finding on my audit, my internal control report relative to major So, that covers the three separate reports that we issue as part of the audit, and I will just move next to our audit comments and prior recommendations. The first one is actually a longtime comment that we've been making because, on internal controls in offices outside the treasurer. At various points during our tenure as auditors, items have been deleted from there as management has instituted controls. And because we look at not every program every single year, in this case, our examination of the city court and Justice of the Peace Courts found some additional findings relative to internal controls that I will discuss, again, will be discussed later in my findings. So, these are, all the areas, which are the parking commission, civic center, health department, landfill, city court, and Justice of the Peace Courts have what we consider to be inadequate segregation of duties. Again, this is a prior-year finding and has been around for several years. The cause of this, of course, is very similar, and this is a common in local governments, which is limited personnel in small offices outside the governments. Proper internal controls actually require you to have, if you have a one-person office, they cannot do all the duties of cash collections. Segregation of duties require that you would have a minimum of at least two people anytime you have cash collections to segregate those duties. Again, our recommendation is that Butte Silver Bow investigate the feasibility of improving internal controls over cash collections at the outside offices noted above. Butte Silver Bow may be able to utilize the services of the city-county auditor to insist in segregation of duties. And I can say, since the new auditor has been on board, she's been very helpful in performing some of those internal controls and performing monthly and more frequent internal checks on some of these outside offices. So, Butte Silver Bow is making improvements in that area. Any questions, comments on my first finding? The second finding is also a repeat finding. During our audit, we noted that the immunization program does not reconcile the billing collections and adjustments to the subsidiary accounts receivable ledgers on a monthly basis. The control process utilized by the department does not allow for a complete reconciliation of monthly activities. Strong internal controls require the reconciliation of the beginning balances, current billings, collections, and adjustments to the accounts receivable subsidiary detailed records. The accounting subsidiary activities are not reconciled on a monthly basis for the immunization program. And our recommendation is, we recommend that Butte Silver Bow implement proper procedures to reconcile the immunization fees and related receivables on a monthly basis. Our next finding relates to the city court and Justice of the Peace Courts. This is actually a new finding. Butte Silver Bow City Court and Justice of the Peace Courts utilize the full court system for case management, including recording of fine activities of the courts. Full court system is administered by the State of Montana Office of Court Administrators. Each clerk is assigned a separate password to log into the full court system. All transactions are required to be recorded under the individual clerk's password. During our examination, we noted that the city court clerks did not log out when they were away from their desks or on lunch breaks. In addition, the clerks would assist each other in recording data without logging out of the system. One individuals would stay logged in the system, and the others would be assisting in that process. In addition, we noted that the city court and Justice of the Peace Courts does not require a second approval or review of adjustments to individual cases recorded in the full court system. What this comment addresses is, if an error is made, proper internal control requires someone to approve that error to make sure that it's proper. That procedure was not being followed by both the city court and Justice of the Peace Courts clerks. The criteria is, the full court system is designed to ensure all activity in the system is recorded and tracked separately for each employee using the system. Employees are assigned a unique password and are required to log off the system whenever they are away from their desks. Employees are required to prepare and sign a cash balance report, which reconciles the date of activity to the cash collected. Just to let you know, the procedure of reconciliation of cash collected and the sign-off was in place during the system. So, they definitely were accounting for the cash collected every day and signing off on that and reconciling to the system. Our recommendation is that the city court office develop procedures to ensure employees that log out of the full court system whenever the computer is left unattended. Passwords should be unique and changed on a regular basis. Employees should not be allowed to enter data using another employee's passwords. In addition, the city court and Justice of the Peace offices should develop procedures for additional approval for all adjustments made to the full court system. Any questions, comments? The final item is, again, a required report as part of our audit, and that's a detail of the prior audit recommendations. I put "not implemented" on Butte Silver, number one, Butte Silver Bow implement internal controls in offices outside the county treasurer. That actually increased slightly as far as internal control findings. Butte Silver Bow did correct the internal control issues prior reporting on payroll and proper approval by law enforcement agencies. Our testing determined that that control was implemented and followed for the sheriff's department. Third item, Butte Silver Bow Health Department implement procedures to reconcile fees and related receivables on a monthly basis. There's a partially implemented there because there were some other collections related to fees collected in outside agencies that were implemented, but specifically related to the immunization department, those were not implemented. And then the final one was civic center obtained prior approval from the council of commissioners for all contracts exceeding six months. And again, our audit determined that those contracts were brought before the commissioners and approved. That's the end of my findings, okay? What the final pages are, as I stated before, is Butte Silver Bow provides these findings to the department heads, who then respond to them. Now, we do not edit the responses, so what you're seeing here is exactly what our comments are, and then down below is the management response. So, we do not have anything to do, the State of Montana requires management to respond to that. But I'm definitely available to answer any questions related to management response. Dinette can actually review the manager responses.
Ms. Gleason.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioners. Really quickly, I just wanted to touch back on, going back to what has been implemented from the prior and corrective action from the prior fiscal year, and I just need to note that our auditor, Wendy McGrath, has done a tremendous job helping us implement controls and processes in place, as well as our treasurer, Lori Baker, Lori Baker, Patrick. We can't get it right up here, I'm sorry, Lori. Anyways, they've worked really hard. Lori and Wendy and the finance and budget department staff worked really hard the last year or so on cash collections, especially those outside of the treasurer's office. We actually found a couple different checking accounts that had been fixed during this fiscal year to make sure that everything's incorporated appropriately and that the right signatories were on those account. We had a couple older chief execing's names on a few things and some other items that we found that a non-Butte Silver Bow employee was on one of the accounts that was actually a judge. They're a state employee, not a local government employee, so we made those corrective actions and changes during the audit period. I think another thing that we've done with our auditor's office is she does a lot of internal reviews. So, when we have certain findings, for example, I'm not picking on law enforcement here tonight because I think that's a big kudo to all those people who are involved in correcting that timesheet issue that we had on our, as reported as a finding for probably four or five years. But Wendy did a lot of review and audit review, not just on law enforcement. She did a lot of time card review for a lot of different departments to assure that we're complying with our current policies that are in place. And she did some corrective action plans with them, and they worked through making sure that everything's in place and in order. So, great kudos to the elected officials and to the finance and budget department staff, not myself here, that really worked hard on trying to make some corrective action plans and then also worked with departments. We continue to work with a couple other departments on kind of changing. We were, County Attorney's Office was one that was our first guinea pig on changing their restitution account and bringing it all in-house. So, you see restitution-type stuff come through that she collects in her office that comes through. Our accounts payable in our claims activity, as well as everything's deposited directly into the treasurer's office. Nothing is deposited in their account and then transferred over. They no longer have an account in their office at all. So, just a sample, just an example of some of the plans and changes that were made last fiscal year. Moving on to this fiscal year, like Pat had mentioned, this first comment, 2019-001, has been ongoing for some time. We do take a good look at this every year. We assess the internal controls. We look at the different procedures, trying to safeguard cash, and then look at our risk. And so, an easy one to pick out, here's the landfill. It's just not feasible to hire somebody and pay with benefits, a full-time clerk position at approximately $45,000 a year, when we probably, between one position, may not handle $45,000 in cash, in cash transactions the whole entire year. And so, we look at the feasibility, and what we do is we do an assessment to see where we can institute controls to mitigate risks without hiring a bunch of additional staff. And like Pat mentioned, we use the auditor's office significantly to look at getting duplicate checks. We do audits. Wendy does the cash reconciliations every month as a separation for a lot of these departments. We do our best to mitigate any risk or any potential of any fraud or not above-board type of activities. Moving into 2019-002, the health department accounts receivable. I'll let Karen Sullivan speak a little bit on that. She's here tonight. But I will say that they implemented a Patagonia software package. We've met with them, Pat, myself, and then Lucy in our department has met with them a couple times throughout the year, and we've been working really hard with them. The software that was delivered to them was a little bit different than what was tested. The sample of test, I believe, was not fully the type of activity that takes place in the immunization program. So, trying to build the database and get all the integration of all the prior-year activity put into place took a lot longer last fiscal year. We fully didn't get implemented till around the first part of May, and we're still working with the software vendors to try to implement a report writing that we can pull out of the system. I think moving forward with this year, Karen and I have met with Diane, and we think it's probably best that the finance and budget department, the IT department, and Diane work together with the software vendor to generate this report. I'll let her step in here in a few minutes to add anything on that. But the final, 2019-003, we do have, I don't want anybody to believe that we don't have a computer use policy and that we don't have password policies, because we do have those. I think where our IT department is working forward now is working with more of a training aspect of people, so I think they get it once, and then they don't remember it a couple years later on password protection and the importance of password protection. And so, our IT department is working on updating their policies as well as training, so we'll have more of an annual training. A lot of people don't like some of those annual trainings, but we're finding now that is definitely, as we move forward into a very high-technology environment, that they're required. We also have a lot of state mandates that are coming down to the IT department where it's going to cause for a double password. So, whether it's a fingerprint or, you know, logging in with a separate password and typing in a token number or something like that, people are going to be very much aware of the importance of keeping their own password to themselves and how the systems track everything you do by your password and by your username and by times and whatnot. So, we're working on that moving forward, as well as the finance and budget department. Pat Burt and the judges will be working together to assure we have the proper procedures in place for review of all the adjustments that are made into their system. A little different here is that it's a full court system ran by the State of Montana, so our IT department can place things right now, which they have already done, if it locks your screen. So, we have screen time lockout. So, if you're not using your application within five minutes or 10 minutes of use, I think there's 10 minutes of use, 15 minutes of use right now, your screen will lock. So, if you accidentally walk away from your desk and don't lock your screen, our policy is if you're away from your desk, you lock your screen. But everybody gets in a rush to go do something often, and they run away from their desk, and so automatically it'll lock, and it'll require you to enter those. Right now, it's one password. Eventually, it'll be two to come back into your screen. Those are a lot of safeguards that we're looking at putting in place as we move forward. And I think that's the major elements here tonight. I don't know if anybody has any questions or if they want to call on some of the other departments that are here to add to the findings and the recommendations.
Thank you, Dinette. Does any of the commissioners have any questions? All right.
So, before we end here, I just want to again say thank you to the staff in finance and budget department. Since last April, we've been down at least one and most often two people, and so everybody's stepped in and helped out, whether it's doing accounts payable so that somebody else is free to do a certain part of the financial statements or whatever it's take. The staff has just done a tremendous effort. And also, just want to thank all the elected officials that we work with, as well as the department heads, because it definitely makes our job a lot easier when they comply with timelines and our requests, and then the auditor's requests and additional requests of information for them or whatnot. So, we do appreciate everybody's time, as well as all of your time and support and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did want to just add one point, is because we're a local firm, one of the things I've offered in even working with the Justice of the Peace and City Court Judge, it's easy for me to come up and meet with them and listen to the controls they're considering put in place, you know, with more of a proactive approach, rather than I come in after the end of the year and tell them what they're doing wrong. So, we've actually discussed having that type of meeting with the JPs and the city court judges. But thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to communications, section two, communication 19-140. Ed Bandarob, resident of the Greater Butte Silver Bow community requesting council of commissioners, request the chief executive to designate an appropriate entity to conduct a survey, prepare a feasibility proposal and recommendation relative to a green container biodegradable waste management program to complement the present landfill composting and alley rally programs. Chief Executive Palmer, do you have an update on this or continue to hold in abeyance?
Please continue to hold this in abeyance. I'm still waiting for McGree to come up with an estimate of what it would cost per individual. We still haven't got an exact count on the individual, so it's a little bit difficult for him to come up with the price, but he's working up a table for us. Continue to hold us in abeyance.
Okay? Thank you. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance. Moving on to number two, communication 19-466. Eric Mankins, Commissioner District Number Nine, requesting council of commissioners authorize the chief executive to discuss a change in the zoning ordinance requiring community residential facilities as defined by state law. ordinance requiring community residential facilities as defined by state law to obtain a conditional use permit within Butte Silver Bow County and all residential zoning districts including R1, R2, R3, R4, S and R-C. We did refer this to the zoning board. So, we'll continue to hold this in abeyance when they come back to, to us.
Flynn.
County Attorney Joyce. Any, did I misspeak on where it went?
No, Mr. Chairman, we did introduce a resolution of intent, I think. And then that does have to go to the zoning board for them to schedule a public hearing.
So, continue to hold this in-
I didn't know if you wanted to cross-reference it with the resolution, but you can hold it until the entire process goes through, I guess. But it does require a public hearing before the zoning board and then a second public hearing before the council after they get the recommendation back from the zoning commission.
So, there was a resolution introduced. Do you happen to remember what the number of that was? What is it?
20-06.
20-06. Commissioner Shaw, did you want to cross-reference this with resolution or what's the pleasure of the council?
What would you recommend, Eileen? That we wait until it's-
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Shaw, the resolution does set forth the entire process that has to be followed. So, I think you did kind of act on his request and now the resolution kind of lays out what needs, what the next steps are. So, you could cross-reference it and go forward with the process as required through the zoning commission and as dictated by the terms of the resolution that was passed.
Sure. Being that Commissioner Mankins isn't here tonight, let's just hold this in abeyance pending return of that. And then we can explain that when he's, when he's back, if that's okay with the council. Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I think Commissioner Mankins is fine with moving it forward. He's indicated that. So, I'm not speaking totally on his behalf, but he's indicated that he would like to see the process move forward. So, I think he would be fine with the cross-reference.
Just as a point of clarification, it has moved forward. There's nothing left for us to do by holding it in abeyance. So, it's just as a placeholder on our agenda for next, next time. So, continue to hold this and we'll just make sure everybody's on the same page before we take it off the agenda. So, number three, Communication 19-571. Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation requesting the Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to form a Butte Silver Bow hazardous to human health heavy metals contaminants task force. Chief Executive Palmer did create this task force. So, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would move to note Communication 19-571 and place this on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would the, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are 10 yea and 0 nay.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Number four, Communication 19-578. Gary Rundle, citizen requesting Council of Commissioners consideration to purchase property located at 1820 Banks Avenue, Butte, Montana. They wish to redeem the property from the Butte Silver Bow before tax sale in February. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the resolution that we will be discussing later on tonight. Number five, Communication 19-582. Ed Bandarob, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation requesting Council of Commissioners to invite a Montana DPHH toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazards, risks to human health of heavy metal contaminants pre, or present in the Butte Silver Bow community. As Mr. Bandarob has indicated, he did send me an email regarding a few people that might be able to come and talk to us about the toxicology as, as he indicated. The question that I'm, I'm asking right now is the original communication from Mr. Bandarob asked that we invite a specific person, Montana DPHH toxicologist to come before the council. And that person, as he indicated, is no longer there. So, as far as the pleasure of the council, before I or Ms. Sullivan extend an offer to somebody else to come and speak, I kind of wanted to see what you guys all thought, if that's something that we want to pursue. He did give me a name of Ms. Julie Hart from Montana Tech. She has a PhD in toxicology and is a professor at Montana Tech. The other one was an individual from University of Montana. They have a toxicology program that might be a solid option for recruiting some help. And he gave me some contact information there. And then the other one was from Montana State University. There's a toxicology, the basic science of poisons course at Montana Tech. And again, he gave me a, a general email to reach out to somebody on that. So, I did forward these on to Ms. Sullivan. She has looked at them, but I kind of wanted to see if, if this council feels that it's appropriate to ask these people because that's not the original intent of the communication that you had before you. So, how would you guys like me to proceed? Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I think that's, I'd be fine with whatever Director Sullivan recommends going forward with having someone come and speak with us. I don't see any reason why not.
Okay. So, I can, I can work with Ms. Sullivan and we can try to figure that out. The biggest thing that I want to make sure that we're all on is when we invite people to talk before this council, we know exactly what we want them to talk about. And so, I believe it's toxicology in general, Mr. Bandarob, or pursuant to, or metals and that type of s-
Metals.
Okay. So, I will work with Ms. Sullivan and we will figure out the best avenue to approach that. So, all right. Thank you. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending that. Number six, Communication 20-04. Michael Townsend, citizen requesting Council of Commissioners to consider the repurchase of my home located at 105 West Porfry. I will comply with all the rules and regulations of the county enrichment program. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the resolution that we will talk about later. Communication 20-53. John Cody, Cody Family LLC requesting Council of Commissioners consideration in purchasing a vacant lot that is currently owned by Butte Silver Bow. We own the lots on three sides of this property and we would like to purchase this lot to make it more feasible to develop our adjacent properties. As I recall, we did deny this request last week. So, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would move to cross-reference Communication 2020-53 with Communication 2020-79 and place this on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have 10 yea and 0 nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number eight, Communication 20-57. Dinet Gleason, Finance and Budget Director requesting Council of Commissioners schedule a public hearing for February 26, 2020 to take public comment on amending the fiscal year 2020 general fund courthouse improvement budget. We did hold this public hearing tonight. So, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to place Communication 2020-57 on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay. Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have 10 yea and 0 nay.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Number nine, Communication 20-58. Dan Olson, Commissioner District Number 5, requesting Council of Commissioners schedule the economic mill levy presentations on Tuesday, February 18th and Thursday, February 20th. From 6:00 to 8:00, the presenters will be allowed a 10-minute presentation every 15 minutes for the mill levies. I believe we could place this on file, but Commissioner Olson, what do you, what are you looking for?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. You'll have a communication this week to, with the agreements that we came to in the, in the meeting last week as to the amounts. And so, then we can act on it next week. If you'd like to file, file this and we can, we can work on another one next, next time. So.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson. I believe another communication would be warranted in that event as you stated. So, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I've moved to place Communication 2020-58 on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay. Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are 10 yea and 0 nay.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Number 10, Communication 20-59. Charlie O'Leary, 3060 Beef Trail Road requesting Council of Commissioners to pass a resolution for a question to be placed on the June 2nd, 2020 local election. The question should be whether the voters of Butte Silver Bow wish to reauthorize the imposition of the economic development mill levy and defined, as defined in the MCA 90-5-112 for another four years. I believe judiciary moved this communication forward. So, we'll continue to hold this in abeyance. Number 11, Communication 20-60. Dinet Gleason, Finance and Budget Director requesting Council of Commissioners time on the February 12, 2020. Council of Commissioners agenda for a presentation to allow time for Pat Burt, Partner Newland and Company, PC, and the Finance and Budget Department to present the fiscal year 2019 comprehensive annual financial CAFR and federal schedule of awards. The presentation will include the audit findings and management responses for fiscal year June 30, 2019. We did have this tonight. So, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to place Communication 20-60 on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are 10 yea and 0 nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. I do want to go back to Communication 1920-59. As, as I stated, the Judiciary Committee, it's number 10, did move this forward. And there is a resolution 2020-10. We could cross-reference this with the resolution and, and take that off the agenda if this body seems okay. Commissioner Shaw.
We could do that. One last thing on our committee the whole. And it is, has been moved forward, asking for final reading as far as the resolution. So, at this time, I would, I guess amend my original motion. I didn't make a motion. Never mind. We will cross-reference Communication 20-59 with Resolution 20-10 and place this on file.
Second. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Callahan, would you please, please vote? Okay. Did anybody like to change their vote? Would, would the clerk please record the vote?
There are 9 yea and 1 nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Next is a public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. Now would be the opportunity. Please state your name and address for the record.
All right. Bandarob, 2601 Grand Avenue. Couple of weeks ago, I sent you all an email relative to the, to don't panic, prepare for the coronavirus. The CDC has now moved the status from observation to preparation. Some critical health caregiver supplies are already in short supply. This virus seems not to be as serious as the Spanish flu with its 25% death rate a century ago. It seems to have only about a 3% death rate. But if this is not, but if it is not continued to be contained within the U.S., it could raise havoc with our food chain supply and other critical survival necessity supplies for a year or two until a vaccine is developed and distributed. So, I do hear the hope, I do hope to hear, excuse me, at this council meeting soon, what preparations are being done in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandarob. Any other public comments on any matter not on tonight's agenda? Please state your name and address for the record.
David Hutchins, 529 South Colorado. I wanted to make sure you all are aware that not all of the concerns have been addressed in the consent decree, rod amendment and public comment process. I serve, I guess I should say, I serve on the CTEC Board. I was a member of the Health Study Working Group and I serve on the Citizens for Labor and Environmental Justice Board. I'm here speaking just on my own behalf tonight. But on behalf of the CLEDGE Board, I submitted eight pages of comments to EPA back in June before the deadline. And they were lost, misplaced. We're not sure. I'm working with the EPA to try and find some resolution there, but it's not a fast process as anything with the EPA is. So, I wanted to go through just a few examples of what we were commenting on. It was all in the context of environmental justice and especially human health. So, I wanted to give a few examples and make sure you're aware that I'm available for any other questions or for this document or the subsequent response. So, as I'm sure you're probably aware, renters are still, still will not have access to the RMAP program. This is a problem for environmental justice. Uptown has an environmental justice community predominantly poor and disproportionately affected by pollution. There was a hope that the consent decree and the amendment would place some sort of mechanism to force recalcitrant landlords and that didn't come. They said the most they can do is write them a letter. Other issues, as you're well aware, our lead action level is one of the highest in the countries, if not the highest. And it was when it was formulated based on a CDC reference blood level. That level was at that point 10 decigram or 10 milli, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting my units here, 10 micrograms per deciliter. It was since then halved. So, in 2014, it was halved from 10 to 5. Since then, for the last six years, the EPA has been promising me a response how that adjustment is going to affect our action levels and action levels around the country, really. I still haven't received a response. I'm concerned the CD is writing our action levels in stone and we're not going to have another chance to revisit that. Other things, our schools, our play areas, our vacant lots haven't been tested. They need to be, they need to be held to the same residential standards as the rest of the priority soils unit. And the other environmental justice community, our Native American population, hasn't been consulted, hasn't been part of this process. There's a lot of other things in here. Again, eight pages of it. I'm more than willing to email this to the council. I'm available for questions and I would certainly like to get you the responses to these questions once we get them. But I guess what I'm here to do is urge you to not be in any rush to finalize this consent decree. 30 years in, I don't think another month or so would hurt to be able to look at all of these concerns in detail. So, and I don't know if you can give me questions tonight. Probably not. Nope. So, how can I get information? Can I email the council?
Your secretary.
Yeah, we have a, if you hold on just a minute, I can run and tell you how to do that.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Okay. Is there any other public comment on anything? Ms. Sullivan, please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Sullivan, 25 West Front. I'm the health officer for the record. Just to convey to the council regarding coronavirus, while the risk is low in Montana, we are taking at the Health Department this very seriously. We work on- We work on preparedness, and we have a wonderful communicable disease nurse named Karen Malakni, who, her job is to head our, among other duties. She is our emergency preparedness lead. So, I want the council to know that we are paying attention. We are preparing some public information, sorry, I'm tired, in regard to what you can do to protect yourself and your family, including getting a flu shot, including ensuring that your children are immunized, immunized. More importantly, for, not only for them, but for an elderly population that this would likely hit harder than the rest of us. So, I want you to know that we prepare for this kind of thing. We're ready. We, we work daily with the state of Montana, and while the risk is low, we're taking this very seriously. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Just as a follow-up with that, right before this meeting, I did go to a St. James Board of Directors meeting, among the foundation board, and the, the, there was a report from the president of St. James. They're fully prepared. You know, they're working on making sure that we're protected as a community, and they have an action plan in place right now in case something does come up. So, the hospital is working on it, and they have a response team ready and active if, in the event, we do receive the, the disease, so, thank you. Is there any other public comment that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will move to adjourn this meeting, but please sit in your seats. We do have one more meeting to go after, after this, so.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll be right back.
Stay tuned.